Darlene, please come to the table.
All right.
You are next.
The notification.
Resource Development Office.
I gotta give you full disclosure, I'm biased here because I'm also on their board.
Oh, the AmeriCorps.
Yeah.
AmeriCorps, our favorite organization.
You can sit anywhere you want, sure.
Okay.
You know, as we start, I want to say how much energy and how much vitality and what a feeling I had when I was down at the Orleans Elementary School for the MLK event.
Thank you for being here too.
I think, well, thank you for having it. You know, the whole, you know, the people that were there, the recognition that would be given to the other organizations of all material year round, I thought it was a marvelous, marvelous event and it just sort of, I guess capped what, you know, what AmeriCorps is all about because when you get old and you're getting things done, whoever ran it this year did a wonderful job of organizing it and I think that that's to her credit and of course it's to credit that everybody was there.
And the members this year, I mean, I'm, of course I am too, but I mean, I always say to them, you know, I think, I think they've raised the bar, like last year I say, that's it, you can't raise the bar any higher and then lo and behold, they're out there this year and this just definitely was a great Martin Luther King Day. I mean, every volunteer from every age, no matter little or right up the lifeline, you know, whatever your challenge, anything, everybody had a way to, you know, be involved. So, the members really did a good job.
It was really wonderful.
They worked really hard too.
They're all, they're all highly complimented.
Yeah, that's what we've been doing, all right, before I came down, the COD days, they call them COD days, the members that are on either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, so we meet with them and kind of debrief on the Martin Luther King Day and tell them how it went. They liked that and they were glad you were there, they have some pictures and I have some stuff that I brought that shows.
One of my likes.
So, we want everyone to help to know that Darlene Johnson-Mars is here from our Resource Development Office, which also includes AmeriCorps for COD.
Yep.
Very important to include that. Okay, so, it's your show.
Yeah. Are we just running down through the numbers? Is that how?
Well.
Sometimes you give out a sort of grant summary.
I do and I just never know whether that is okay with everybody.
Yes, fine. That's usually helpful sometimes.
Good, good. What I put together and we have, what we've done and tried to listen to each year our comments from the Assembly of Delegates as well as the Commissioners and different people coming up with this, capturing the grant development report. So, what we did this year is put the grants in fiscal years. Let me just explain one thing when you're looking at this though, the grants are really hard because you may see, you know, oh, it's not that many in this fiscal year, but these are grants we probably, some of them you don't hear back in the same fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, I didn't want to repeat, you know, look like we're repeating the same thing, giving you the same thing. So, we color-coded them to each one of the fiscal years and we went back and then we put the technical assistance, which is a lot, we do a lot of technical assistance that's out there, project development and work with a multiplicity of different towns and county departments and then we put that on the back so you could, so you could get an idea of that, so that's.
One, two, I think I've got one and there's two.
John, you have this.
Do you want to give one to David still?
Hi, David.
Should we keep it a secret?
No, these are just the grants and what I did is, the Assembly of Delegates asked last year, the Finance Committee, they were asking what did the town put up. Well, we didn't have a line for what the town put up, you know, in terms of, look what information we're capturing, so we added that on. Now, you're not going to see that in the previous ones because we did not do that. And what I want to also say is with these AmeriCorps Weeks that we have done now, Orleans last year, the year before Barnstable, the year before that Yarmouth, the year before that another Barnstable, these have brought in between the grants, the AmeriCorps members going out, the volunteers, these have turned into a resource that is huge for the towns. It's allowing the towns to pick out their own projects that they want to, you know, focus on during that week and then we're able to write the grants, bringing in like last year for Orleans, we brought an N-Star grant in and then we matched it with our county match money from the commission that we have from the Hugh and then the town put in and Hugh put that all together and it was over $40,000 worth and that's not counting the AmeriCorps time, that's just the amount that they did for the week. And our Harwich Blitz Week where we're out there every week now, we probably are going to look at doing that with other towns, we've been doing it with Harwich for years and, you know, Thompson Field and that area, I think we're going to start, we've started talking to them about doing this in another town, but between the AmeriCorps Week and this year it's going to be Dennis, just so you know, that we have talked about Dennis being the next town and this is all, the way this happens is from these individual placements with the members, how do we develop the AmeriCorps Week, it goes for that. So, the Resource Development Office has been working, those officers are working now trying to identify funding sources. The Mass Service Alliance who has supplied AmeriCorps, you know, had a funding, a competitive funding for these AmeriCorps Weeks will not have money this year. So, we've received $15,000 that you've matched, the county has matched up to 5,000 or 6,000 each year for the town that becomes, you know, the beneficiary of the AmeriCorps Week and they're not, they do not have those funds this year because they were cut back significantly, the commissions. So, what we're going to have to do is find another, we're going to the Cape Cod Foundation and we're going to see if we can get the funds for the AmeriCorps Week in Dennis that way. And it'll be another town the following year, so anyway, but they are, they do come from these individual placements, which I'll let you see these individual placement sheets too, just so you know what towns they're in and these are also, you can see where the members are and what they're doing.
Can I just talk about the grants?
Yes.
Okay, so, a town, is part of your job is that you keep reviewing whatever grants, like government grants, whatever grants are out there and you see ones that have regional impact, what the towns can do, you try to identify those that sort of fit our core mission, correct?
Right.
Okay. And you notify, you put out notices to towns that these grants are available, that they're out there or, you know? Or do they contact you and say, we know this grant is out there? Do you write the grant with someone in the town or how do you work with the town if they want to?
Like, say with the town of Yarmouth.
Yeah, with this pack.
We wrote, we wrote the grant that they got for the 550.
Yeah, that they can match it, yeah.
They, no, they got it.
Okay, that was back in 2010.
We got that grant.
Yeah.
We got the grant, they matched the grant, now phase two of it?
Right.
We struck out.
Well, it looks like you got the grant, but they couldn't match, they couldn't do the match.
Well, they still, they, no, they, they received the first park grant that we submitted and we wrote that grant. Now, they, we went after the second one and there were, they changed the RFP a little bit and they, they want this proof that you're a green community and that's what happened with Yarmouth on that.
Who decided whether it should be a green community or not since the state had made very restrictive measures?
Town meeting has to vote to become a green community.
It's, you know.
That's all it has to do? It doesn't have to requit, fit the requirements of the Green Communities Act? They just have to vote themselves that we are going to be green? No, no, you have to meet all the criteria.
Criteria.
The Green Communities Act and then, once you do, you're eligible, but then town meeting has to vote. Pat O'Roast is the only town that's gotten that.
Pat Armstrong, the county of Yarmouth with Recreation, had the 550,000 money for this park grant that we put in and then when they didn't get the money, she said, we asked, you want to go back again next year, you know, we want to go back after this, or we're also repackaging it and trying to look for what she did. She said, I am not going to hold my, the money that we've been approved for, she wants to move forward with what she can. So, what we're going to do is we're going to see what you couldn't pay for with half the money and see if we can go after another grant. So, that's where we are on that.
So, but when the towns do come to you, you do the grants?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very unfortunate that the state has not allowed us to provide as an umbrella organization to put together several communities that could qualify as, let's say, as one or two or three, let's say three of them, group together as a green community, but the fact that they're requiring every community to have the same, you know, have the same standard, I think is unfortunate because there's a lot of access.
Cost prohibitive, I mean, in many, in many, many ways.
Because, you know, we, you know, the Cape Light contact has reached out to try to, you know, to provide that support and the state has basically just rejected it, so I, I'm very, I think that that's very unfortunate.
Yeah. Well, you know, I don't know if you've been able to, I was able to see what happened at Flax Pond, it's absolutely wonderful.
I was there last time, it is, she's done a great job.
Yeah.
She is, she's really, and she's got a great team there and great volunteers and it's beautiful, it's a beautiful campsite, it's something that really needs to be.
And what town is this?
It's Yarmouth and it's called the Flax Pond Recreation Area and it's really a jewel that nobody really knows about in Yarmouth and they do great programs for kids and it's a real summer experience for people who have working, you know, that are working and, you know, they're economically strapped a little bit, so there's someplace for their kids that's healthy, outdoors.
It's great.
It's really wonderful, it's a, it's a great campsite.
So, we're really looking for, you know, the parts that she cannot fund through, you know, parts of the grant that we submitted and then see if we can find other sources of money for those, those pieces of it.
Right, well, good, good luck on the American team.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Because that's a real.
It is.
And it's a needed resource for, for working people, it really is.
Yeah.
There's a question that comes up every year, is how robust is the funding that supports the AmeriCorps program in general, both of the state and the federal level as far as how we will continue and what, and what action should we take in order to, let's say, to advocate for its continuation? And you hear me say that?
Yeah, you know, that's major in itself, it's, I've always said.
It's been a long time now.
Well, I mean, I always say, you know, I think I said this to Pat too, is that I just, you put your head down and plow and the work speaks for itself, it has to, it is, it is, it is the service that we provide in what we do and hopefully, like I say, we've, we've had success with bringing resources to our community and the community approves of those, those resources and the services that we're providing and the county has been, without the county, we, we could never have the success that we, we have with AmeriCorps. It's such a unique national piece that we, that we do. However, I will not say that the Corporation for National and Community Services, you know, everything is under the gun right now with the, with the budget, I do not know what to expect in terms of, they did cut, significantly cut, the state commissions, which would be the infrastructure for the AmeriCorps programs across the nation and that swipe was, was pretty significant that they took for each state, each state has a commission in all the AmeriCorps programs, you know, all the, all the AmeriCorps, N-triple-C, Vista, all these different types of, same types of programs are, are under those programs. So, they took a big hit, so, you know, the indicators are is what's going to happen to the corporation budget. Now, our recompete is, our recompete proposal went in, we had a concept paper that was accepted and then this long process, but we put the recompete in, in December, right before Christmas and that was huge package, competitive package, it's just huge, but it included six additional members that we had asked for in the continuation before, if you remember, for the fire crew that we, we would be working and collaborating with Dave Crary at the National Seashore, so there'd be another house that the seashore would put up where these six members would live and also working with Bill Clark and, you know, his fire program and all the land management.
I think you need to explain that the fire program we're talking about is in the conservation lens or management practice in order to preserve these, you know, the great investment the communities are making in the preservation of conservation needs to be managed properly and I think the AmeriCorps helping the towns with, you know, with the designation of where the fire breaks should go and what, and what measures have to be taken as we put more land into, let's say, into conservation, that they need to be protected and I think without this piece, this investment that, you know, that the AmeriCorps kids are making, that, that property would be at risk and this is after the, you know, significant investment that's made through CPC and through, you know, through land bank.
That's good.
Well, that's not a mild question.
No, no, it's, it's, we are at max in the two houses, so 26 with, with our two houses is all that we can do.
You have to go outside to turn around and.
So, yeah, and they, even in that, it's putting, you know, it is 13 years in both of these houses, it's put pressure on the houses, there's no doubt, but the Fire Academy, I mean, the Fire, the National Seashore has a, a house that would be dedicated to this crew, it's right behind headquarters back there.
Right, by the Mark Company, yeah.
And there's near, near the other fire crew that they have, so, and Dave Crary's and Justin, the two that run this program, they're, they've got this all, it's, they already know how it works and they put in 50,000. Now, last year, last time we put that in our budget as the Matthews, it wasn't any additional cost to the county, but this year what we did is he's just going to hire a coordinator that would be working on this fire piece with our six members, with us. So, we have, that's how we've put it together, so that he would just do that, it would be a match, but it's an outside match, it's not right in, it's, you know, not in there. So, that's how.
That's great.
That was all.
Well, the good news is, says you were invited to submit a full proposal.
Absolutely good, it was very good.
Yes, that is good.
And we will not, yeah, we did, so now we put in to the feds and they, now, we put into the state and then they review it, their board reviews it, so far they all liked it, so now it's gone away to the feds, goodbye it went the other day.
Oh, good.
So, it's there, now we will not hear from them until.
July 1st. Yeah, it's pretty, like, June 31st.
Yeah.
Or June 30th.
Which is so hard.
Department reviews that and the federal government.
It's through, it's under the Department of Interior.
Interior, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, you know, I don't, they're.
Is that one of the departments that the President wants to combine?
I don't know.
I don't know.
We're not in this year anyway. Where, you know, we already have cooperative agreement with the National Seashore for the house that we have in Wellfleet, but there definitely would have to be another letter from the Department of Interior and because we've received so many of these awards from the Department of Interior and we already have a relationship and working with the park here, that the park writes a letter and says we're using federal, federal match, the federal match, because that's usually a no-no in AmeriCorps programs, but since we get special permission for it.
Right, good.
So, that's where that is and then.
Going forward as far as the support of continuation, should we encourage the towns to write letters in support of the services because of the 13 towns that we visited of the 15 in making our reports, AmeriCorps is looked at as one of our most visible, after cooperative extension, one of our more visible programs?
Yes, I think all of that helps, it, everything helps, it even, even with the state because the way it used to work, and I have to clarify this because I don't know after they take this hit on the state commissions, is that we, they threw us out, meaning they threw us out of the federal pool and competitive, so what happens is we're out there competing with all the national programs and that takes the money away from Massachusetts, so Massachusetts can fund more programs under their state money. So, some of the programs that are AmeriCorps programs here in Massachusetts are funded by formula funds that are state funds that, through the Service Alliance and in our early days, we were on that too, but then they put us out, they take their, their programs that are the better ones and the ones that they think can compete nationally and they, and if they're funded, if they're not funded and they fall back, then generally that means that your top programs fell back, they would pick those up and then the bottom falls out of the ones that were funded before, so, so some smaller programs would get knocked out unfortunately if we fell back in there. Now, I don't know if they're going to continue to have that process because of the cuts that, that happened with the Mass Service Alliance, because that's unknown, because they cut, in January 1 was effective, these cuts that they cut from them.
Do you believe that you have the, the understanding of our state or of our Cape delegation with regard to what we're doing, because if there are state funds involved, there's obviously legislation that has to support it, so I wonder, what is your level of, of, let's say?
Communication.
Communications, because I think what we need to do is we need to make sure that, you know, that Dave Viers and Randy Hunts and.
Dan Wolf and.
Dan Wolf and everybody is on board for, you know, for what we're, for trying to do, because I think that generally they're in support, but I think they, they may need some more specific information.
They do, they do, anything from you, I mean, they, from, from you and from the towns, this would go far, I mean, do we have communication with, I mean, Therese Murray sends the members letters each year and, you know, congratulates them, sometimes she'll send somebody out to a service project and she's always wanted to come out herself and I think there's a genuine, Dan Wolf, we went to meet with his office and everything, but, but I still think, you know, that it's always important to let them know that they, yeah.
Well, may I make a, go ahead.
I just wanted to suggest that if we had a one sheet, bullet points of things you should know about AmeriCorps and what, and a specific question of what we're asking them to do based upon what we're telling them we're doing, I think that that would be very useful and if we.
We can absolutely do that.
If we did that, we could circulate that.
Show the cost savings.
Into the House.
Sign them.
Yeah. I think in your annual report, there's that one page, I remember, it says, how many hours of service, blah, blah, blah.
The other thing I wanted to suggest is that if we speak to the towns and we ask them to write letters of support, even if they want to write letters of support to us or whoever we're going to direct that to, to CC their delegation, I mean, they're representative on that delegation and then, and also State Senator Wolf and State Senator President Therese Murray, so we could ask them, I mean, that one letter alone would be great, so.
But I think it'd be useful if we gave them, this is what needs.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, we could write our own letter saying that to the delegation, but if the towns wrote letters to us with, with copies to the delegation, it would, I think, make a good point.
The towns could write to the Interior.
Right.
Right, well, that's, that's what I mean, just to the Interior with a copy to our
delegation, I knew it was going somewhere.
I'd just suggest then that we, you know, we charge Mark to talk to Darlene, to get that done.
Follow up.
And then we get this.
Get everybody to send those letters.
So, that we actually get moving rather than having, we're having a conversation about it, but I think we need an action piece in order to, you know, to start.
And even specify some of the awards the program has received.
And they, you know, there's a section of the grant, we talked about that and you forget about, you, you really forget until you start, it's very significant, the number of, of different awards, so we put it into our, you know.
And we should put that in our letters, this is an award-winning program.
Right. Okay, this is great, thank you.
Congratulations on the grants.
Yeah, we already did.
Good luck on the rest.
Yep.
I am seeing these grant writing, I know that you're doing grant writing workshops and that sort of thing, but I see some around, are those more independent or do you do?
I was messing up.
Have you done?
What did you say?
I know that you're increasing grant writing classes and instructions and I see, I see others around, I'm not sure if they're always affiliated with you or not, I mean, I get these things, like a grant writing workshop, I think they must be out of your office.
Yeah, we, what we're doing now is because of the transition, we've had staff for a long, long time and now we have new staff in AmeriCorps, we have new staff in Ardea, we're, we're also now like trying to manage all of the data that we are collecting and putting together a, kind of like these standard operating procedures on both sides of the house and also a grant profile book, so we're, we're going to go back but go forward with a nice book that shows pictures of the projects, so you could just look through and see what Resource Development, so we're working on that and training the new Resource Development Officers and also.
Fill the towns.
The new, right, so it's kind of like all, kind of starting again.
All at once, okay.
There, there are increases in my budget as far as the numbers are concerned.
Less than $30,000 is every number.
Yes, it is, less than, most of these increases were either for the facilities improvement and part of the AmeriCorps, only because we need to do, you know, more types of improvements in the houses, I keep what we do with the Wellfleet House at a minimum because it is a seashore house and the seashore is great about doing a lot of that themselves and we work with them to do that, tech, you know, most of, we have the inside though, we have the inside and we take it to the inside and then we're also, George has been, George in the Health Department, we've been in the seashore working on getting a septic out there, which has been a long, long process, but we're, we're getting there and that's not going to be paid for by us, that's the seashore, but we're working with them and George is also going to help out with that, so, which is nice of the Health Department to really work with us on that. And then the, some of the facilities, the windows and replacing energy efficient windows in the Bourne House, the Bourne House looks good.
Yes, and you've been working with Cape Light with that and I'm sure and all.
Yeah, yeah, and then we have that, we have the solar panels on the roof and we've got, we've got a grant for that and we just keep on, but it's, it is owned by the county, so it is a good investment for.
It's very, very good, no, those are great things, we should have all of that.
So, we, we put a little bit more in there for that and then there was an increase in the mileage, the gas money that we give to the members and that, just because of the gas going up.
Right.
And that was, that increase and then the Resource Development Office, it was just merely computers, you know, computer equipment that's outdated, we usually move them around to the members and they get the more stuff. And then we also created a couple of resource stations that have these, the members come out, they are the best and brightest and they're good at all of these new software so they can make all these beautiful posters, do all these different things, so there's a couple of suites that we improved on there and those can be used by all the county employees and we're going to put out a nice little list of resources that are available through the Resource Development Office that they can come out and use too.
Excellent.
So, that's all that, that's all that this, the increases are, if you have any questions about any of the increases.
In one of our previous, in one of your previous budgets discussing with IT, he was on his wish list was to put a fiber optic into both houses and it's very expensive and given the tentative nature of how AmeriCorps is funded and with the fact that we don't know, do you have enough internet capability out there now that we could defer that cost if it doesn't make his, if his wish list, it has to get trimmed?
I'm totally fine with the, I mean, I don't want to shoot anybody in a foot or anything about what we want to like to do, it'd be great, but it's just, we, we're, we're good, we're good, we can, we can. The members will do without anything, they seem to think that that's what they want to do.
That's exactly right, they shouldn't be connected, that's part of their experience.
Yeah. I'm having a hard time getting somebody to plow, they don't want to plow, they want to shovel.
I'm talking about before I moved here permanently, but that was part of the joy is that you really did have the outer Cape, especially the outer Cape, it's that experience of, you know, gee, I guess we have to work with a puzzle or play, you know, card games or talk to each other, what a concept.
Yeah.
Or maybe walk the beach or walk the trails.
You know, I literally said, you know, the Wellfleet driveway is just so long and when we have so much snow, this year we didn't, but last year, we want to shovel, we want, I'm like.
And Darlene, have you ever articulated how many of the AmeriCorps kids have spent significant amounts of their time on Cape Cod after their service contract?
Yes.
You know what?
I think that's just a stunning ancillary benefit.
It is, John, and it's become, you know, especially when I saw some of these articles talking about young people that, that are not staying, but it is significant, it's one of the things that the corporation puts on their. It's one of the things that the corporation puts on their front of their, their transparency for, for, you know, programs, talking about how many of these members stay is, is a very big success story for us.
Or work to come back and stay.
See, they found their niche.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of, maybe with other young people, they haven't found that niche yet or they don't know it's there.
Right.
And if I can find a way to capture the alumni-
Yes.
There is a way. I mean-
There should be a way.
Grant money, some, that's an underutilized resource for this area. They're here, they come out. Bill, you saw them there, so many recognize Bill from alumni that were out from, yes.
I know, I've had a lot of them come up to me too.
They come up to you and they know you guys because they'll, they think, you know, they're just like, oh my gosh, what's their name?
No, and they, they expect that, I mean, they're really good about it.
They do, and they, they go out and they are with us on almost all of these projects. They stop what they're doing and come out and they're, they're there. And it's, if, if we could just, you know, have an association or a grant where I could, you know, I, I, we've been thinking of some ideas on that. And then also, Mark, thank you for the greenhouses. We are going to move on that as well.
Oh, good.
They, you know, we, uh, members are going to go in and clean up these two greenhouses and then I guess the history on those is coming out from Calliope. She's giving me all the history of how that was all farmland, that's why they're like, located right there in the middle of the parking lot. So, it'll be really nice, the members will go in and make it look beautiful.
Yeah, I just, I just learned a lot of that from John when we had that last meeting, how that was all, was a long ago, this was all kind of past here.
So, we'll get the whole deal on that and work with Bill Clark to, to maybe with the master guard, come up with some programs if you have any ideas. Anybody has anybody a idea?
We do, but we have to talk to him.
Yeah, you know who you need to talk to too, is like the Barnstable Village Association.
Because the Barnstable Village Association, and, well, you know, we're in one more phase, I, actually, sorry, in Kennedy over at the MMA, but they are doing their revitalization, so we are working with them on the parking here, maybe doing something with the parking lot to make it more user-friendly on the off times, weekends and that sort of thing. And part of their plan, now, of course, this is Barnstable, having to work with it, but we can work with the town of Barnstable if they have the funds to go through, but they want to do a walkway to the sea through the back here. And they've done a lot of the clearing of the, and it would be, it's very much like what you did at Gray's Beach, that type of walkway would be beautiful. So, um-
We get some of this stuff on a group service, if you get it on a group service form so we can know-
I'm not sure if they're ready to go there yet, but that's part of the plan, but I, I think it would be a great project for, for AmeriCorps, so.
And, you know, AmeriCorps, this is where we live.
Yeah, and no, this is, yeah, and this is really-
And if you have things that you want-
That would be being a very good neighbor.
Yeah, but if you have some things that you also want, you let me know, we get it in a group project.
Yeah.
You can, you know, if you want to bench beside the, the, you know, greenhouse or-
There might be a little, yeah, there's, there's some ideas.
Slower.
We haven't finished, it's, now it's with the planning departments over at the commission and their, their group in the town, so.
Yeah, and sort of getting the money, they don't have any funding for it, yeah.
Well, we can, we can, we can chase some smaller grants or something, I don't know.
The money you put in for the facility, what did you see as needs for that?
This facility's improvement?
Eighteen thousand that I took out.
Uh. What line item is that, please?
Uh, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it was like eighteen thousand.
Oh, it's eighteen thousand?
It used to be twenty-five-
Yeah, a long time ago.
-back in the day. And then we just cut it down and cut it down and cut it down. But-
I cut it down even further this year.
You did?
I did. Well, that's why I'm asking you the question, I mean-
I can live without it, Mark. I mean, I can. I was going to use, part of it is pay, I have to figure out how to pay the bills on that.
The sewer bill?
No, not only that.
We have that.
We got that covered, but the, but the sewer, but the, these greenhouses, I get it till I find, I'm paying the bills on, I'm, you know, did the, pay for the maintenance and that just came out of nowhere. So, it was like, for the roof to be put on and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, like I said, like we can, we can minimize whatever we need.
It's on the second page, five eight oh four, if you see it there, eighteen.
Oh, I see it, okay. Oh, yeah, fifteen to eighteen.
So, if you got, you know, I'm okay. We could, we could live with it, we can have it.
All right, well, that's something we've got to talk about later on in next week as well.
I mean, you know, like I said, we can, there's no emergency-
That's why that was sort of the nature of my question, is this-
There's no emergency in the house and I can do whatever we need to do.
It seems to me in time past, there was some emergency with the graduate heating system up in the Bourne House.
Oh, you're, you know, that's why Mark was helping me with that initially in the first place. It was like, we had to take the members out of the entire house that one year because the whole thing went down. Water went out, everything went out. And we've had it happen in both houses, so it's like, you have to have enough in there just if something comes down.
Right.
But I think we do-
We've done the electrical, right, in the Bourne House?
Yeah, you know, good, I mean, we still have that electric money, we didn't use very much.
We didn't do it, no.
We didn't use any, because the electrician said he wouldn't only go so far with that house because it's so electric.
So, in other words, he just improved the service entrance, he didn't do any of the interior wiring.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Right, I definitely will.
Good job. Yes, we love having you come.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, thank you for all of your support.
Such a positive program, truly.
Thank you.
You're doing a good job.
It's great having all those kids.
They, uh-
You know, the alumni show up for the, a lot of events and I wondered that if, you know, in July when you have the presentation and they all, and the alumni show up, they just have a, have a form for them saying, "Okay, we're trying to collect, you know, communication information on you, would you fill it out so we know where you are? We know who you are, but we want to know where you are."
I would have swore when we had that thing at the Bray Farm last year, that we did something like, that you guys had that information.
Well, we have, oh, no, we do, we have, I just need to come up with a great idea to get, to utilize them, you know, like Guiding Stars or something to, to, that they can take it up another notch of what we can get for service out of them for this community and the leadership there, but-
Well, I, I think the one thing you could get out of them right away, it'd be not pretty, you know, not pretty painful or expensive, is to organize them on communicating with, since they're living here, communicating with, in the town that they live in and then with the legislative delegation about when something comes up and we're, and we're basically looking for support. I would think that they would be the nexus of support because they've been there, done that and they know, and they know the value. And they've stayed here. But I think speaking to that, you know, I would think they would be inclined because there's certain, we all have, we all have residual loyalty to the, as alumni, to any organization we serve with, so I think you could tap on that.
Call it Cape Corps.
Okay, right, yeah. Okay, so we're going to go into recess.
Good, we're going to recess. Thank you very much, Darlene.
Thank you, darling. I appreciate your support. I appreciate everything that you are having to do now.
We are going to go back into session because the human rights people aren't here, so we're going to take up the budget discussion. So, yeah, so, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're back from recess. We recess at twelve fifteen and we are awaiting the Human Rights Commission, but they haven't arrived yet, so we're going to proceed with our next agenda item, which is a discussion of proposed revenues for fiscal 2013. So, want to welcome the Assembly of Delegates members, it's nice to have you here.
Yes, it's good to have you. Interest. You know, it's always good to be seen, too.
Yes, there you go, Marsha and Chris Panega and June.
We have a quorum of the Assembly's Finance Committee here.
Oh, well, no talking in between you.
Okay, Mark.
Okay, so the first page is the picture of the proposed 2013 revenues and it's essentially the same one that we talked about a couple of weeks ago now, I don't even remember, two weeks ago perhaps. There's been some minor adjustments to fit with the budget, especially in things that match. For example, the dredge budget you see is a little bit different because the dredge revenues match what the dredge budget is, that's how we do that.
Well, can we just start with tax revenues?
Sure.
And then just go by category?
Sure, yeah, sure. So, the tax revenues in that first category, the county tax assessment, the Cape Cut Commission tax and the Registry of Deeds excise tax, those are no different than they were two weeks ago and the-
So, we're looking at a-
Deeds tax reduction of four hundred and fifty thousand.
Here we go, right there, yeah.
Now, now, if we go back to the 2012, okay, so we budgeted for seven million, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand, and we are reducing that for 2013 by four hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct.
And our, we are anticipated decrease in our revenue in that category for 2012.
Yeah, it's about seven million, yeah. It'll, will be about seven million dollars, just a little bit more, I think, is what we're saying right now.
What do you see? No, I'm, we're, okay. We're talking two things. This is the budget for next year.
Right.
But in terms of the, the, the proposed anticipated revenue is to be, expected to be four hundred, about four hundred and fifty thousand less than what we budgeted for this year.
Correct.
But how much, how does that four hundred and fifty compare to what we actually anticipate our revenue to be in that category for this year? Because there is a drop.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is in 2012, we'll probably realize about seven million is what we're guessing. Remember the presentation that I gave? I think the number was seven million. So, it will be down.
So, you're anticipating that we will be down four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
On that budget line item. See, that's where you have to be careful.
That's one line item.
Right. And if you go back, remember, we talked about the presentation that I did on the Treasurer's Report, kind of showed, walks you through what the starting fund balance was in 2011, what the ending fund balance was in 2011 for the general fund, and I sort of, I walked you through exactly how we got to that point.
Right.
And so, that's kind of, you have to look at the ins and the outs and how they all add up.
Exactly, okay.
So, you just have to always keep that in mind when you're just talking about revenues, it'll be the same thing when we're just talking about-
This is where it was just still showing there.
So, we're really just level funding the revenue for the, for this year, or what we anticipate to be our revenue for this year under Registry of Deeds.
You can almost take out revenue, you, we're just about level funding the budget, is what it's going to be.
Level funding the budget, okay.
There's some cuts actually we have to make, yeah.
Yeah, but those can go other places.
But that's exactly what we're doing. Level funding.
Okay.
You're anticipating, was it a slight raise in the rental fees for the courthouse?
Yep, and we just submitted those courthouse rental amounts and I talked about those at that time, so that number is just about right. No change in the purchasing fees, that's five hundred we charge Martha's Vineyard to do the regional purchasing for them with all the other towns we do for on the Cape. The extension service, that's grant, now I'm in the grant contracts, that's the coastal geologist and marine funding we get from Woods Hole, the Hui program, pays for half the coastal geologist and half of the marine program people. Bill, Bill Clark talked about that. County Health Department, we do see an increase in the tobacco staff. We actually, this year, we think we're going to have some money to put on another halftime position, so that's what that is in there. You remember Beth talking about the sixty thousand for the human services grant? It was the MEM-
Mass in Motion.
Mass in Motion, the MEM grant.
It's the same product that the Department of Health got for tobacco.
So, that, that was, that was included and added, we didn't have that in the first time we talked about these. Hundred and forty-five thousand for the Children's Cove, that's the eighty for the Sane and sixty-five for the Children's Services Grant.
In past time, there has been some question as to whether or not that particular grant contract would be supported. What gives us confidence this year?
Stacy said it's there.
Yeah, they're actually trying to get a hundred and thirty, which is what we used to get from the Children's Services Grant, so, but I think we're pretty confident about the sixty-five. The eighty Sane, we've never not got, so that's pretty solid.
So, if, so-
Sixty-five, I think it was only one year and that was two years ago that we didn't get.
So, if we, so if they do come forward, then there will be less obligation to Children's Cove? I mean, we're kind of looking at this as though they don't get that supplement.
No, we're looking at if it does, it's built in there. And actually, I take that back. They, it wasn't, it was a year where we assumed they didn't get it, and this is what caused the problem.
That's the problem, right.
We assumed they didn't get it, we funded it, and then they did get it.
Exactly.
And that caused, you know, basically a surplus.
Right.
Also, the speeding frenzy over the Assembly.
Well, so, sort of what I would suggest is this is the better proposal, is to assume you get it, if you don't get it, then we have to go, we have to go back. And then, as you remember, with Cape Cut Commission discussion, their grant assumptions are down, especially in Mass Highway, and so you see that number's lower than this year by a hundred and seventy-three thousand. On the department revenue pieces, the RDO, as Darlene said, that's really an administrative fee. She bills into some, but not all of her grants, some grants don't allow an administrative charge. The Cape Light Compact, as you know, is now off budget, they're not asking for any money, it'll all be coming out of their Energy Efficiency Program. They're not asking for any county money this year.
Is that, is that going to be paying all of Maggie's salary?
It's all out of the Energy Efficiency Fund.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's, so that's Maggie's-
Maggie's salary's always been in the County Commissioner's office.
Right, okay.
Right. Building rentals, twenty thousand four hundred, same as it was before, that's really for DA. I think there's one other office that rents some space in some of our courthouse facilities. The extension service, the eighteen seven fifty that normally is in there, was expanded by the fifty seven thousand three hundred.
Really?
That's for the UMass salary reimbursement. This will be the first year that, what happened before was UMass would pay the staff directly, but now UMass reimburses us for a portion of their salary.
That's for the cooperative.
For cooperative extension.
Right. But they, they were always county employees anyway.
They're always county employees.
And they continue to be county employees, but now the funding comes to us in-
A piece of it, fifty seven thousand three hundred.
Well, the thing that we have to, and we, I brought this up before, is that we, because of other activities that I'm involved with that are, you know, that we, that are funded by the agency for reimbursement, we have to watch this very carefully because it also would bring up the possibility, as Bill Clark said, that they could, since they're not dealing with an individual, they could basically cut the program and then we would be stuck with the, you know, with making up insurance as far as salaries go. So I'm very concerned about this particular thing.
Well, there's nothing you could do about that anyways, so.
Not your bad.
If they're going to cut their budget, they're going to cut their budget.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If employees are funded through a grant, do they understand that if the grant is no longer available, that their employment is not guaranteed? I mean, do most people, if they're grant employees, do they?
You're right.
Or do we, you make special provisions for people who, for employees who are totally grant-funded, so that if the grant ever goes away, if the grant goes away, then?
The answer is yes.
The need for the person would go away, so they would understand that their position?
The answer is yes.
And the service goes away.
The Tobacco Program is sort of the perfect example.
It's a perfect example of that.
For a long time, it was actually three people, and then it sort of had been cut back over time, and we were down to just one person, and it was actually Bob Collette, and now we're, there seems to be additional funding coming through, so we're going to hire another half-person. But they're fully aware. And the other thing we always do is you charge the grant for the fringe pieces. So, and you put those monies into a reserve fund that, where you carry all those funds over. So, for example, if you have to let those people go, they're eligible to collect unemployment, you have a fund that you can pay the unemployment charges out of, those types of things.
Except a certain percentage of health insurance is part of that?
Yeah, all the fringes we charge back to.
Of course, people do listen to their optimism, and, you know, they make, we can't help any assumptions that they make with regard to expectation.
Right, and even though it might be a good program, doesn't mean that it's, you're in no obligation to continue it if we don't have the funds to do it. And that's something, I mean, a lot of times, I think.
Yeah, that gets to be your decision.
Yeah, a lot of times you say, oh, that was such a great thing, I guess we have to continue it, and then you get stuck carrying something that you really didn't dream up yourself in the first place, it was created for the grant.
Well, go back to the Cove one, the Cove one's perfect example. When we didn't, or assumed we didn't get the 65, you made the determination that, yes, you wanted to keep that program as its whole going, so you put the 65,000 in it.
And indeed, many other parts of America were also falling in that category.
I know that. And that's, I mean, there's, sometimes we have to make those hard decisions, like, I mean, this wasn't part of our core mission. Our, as a county, is this, so do we really, should we keep carrying those things, or should we not? And, you know, that's, they're nice to have, but do they really, is that what we?
Yeah, they, exactly the determinations you have to make when you lose funding like that.
That's why we get the big bucks, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Registered Deeds revenue, that's.
That's the.
Business revenue.
How are you?
One, got you, moving.
Oh!
We've been waiting for you.
God!
Don't worry, we're ready.
Okay.
We're sorry, somebody should, somebody should have.
Yeah, they didn't even think of it. Yeah, bring them all in.
Oh, they, they were.
They were already 11 and 12.
Part of the 10% didn't get to the.
Or they might have been sitting outside, no, they weren't? Just, let me cover this last one. $3 million is the Registered Deeds business revenue, that was what we talked about two weeks ago. That's coming down as well because of the slower business over there. I mentioned the dredge budget, 803, that matches their budget for next fiscal year. Health Department, the 500,000 for Health, the lab, that was the same number we talked about a couple of weeks ago. I did also mention the Health Department Sanitarian Services. George is exploring, doing some additional work for towns on a contractual basis, so that one includes Orleans, which we've done for years and years and years, and the 51-422 covers some additional work that he's mentioned, and hopefully we'll be able to put together.
And then there are some revenues associated with?
That's exactly what that is, yeah.
With services, so even though we are, it shows an expense on our part, there's, there's revenue.
Which one is this we're talking about?
The Sanitarium.
The Sanitarium.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Touring facilities, I got caught up in the line.
So John, how are you?
We're very sorry that you were out there.
Were you in 11 and 12?
We were sitting right off the bench, thinking that you had somebody in there.
Did you tell anybody who you were here to speak?
Nope.
They didn't say they're in there?
They'll be squealed.
Came back to find out.
Oh, we're sorry.
We're sitting out there wondering what happened.
You're pooping to me over and over again, and you're probably one of the brightest guys that I know, because you're smiling, so you're wearing it to here.
Well, I mean, after all.
After 25 minutes, you figure that.
Yeah. All right, so are we going to?
We're going to suspend that, we'll go back to HRC.
We're going to suspend discussion of the budget and welcome the Human Rights Commissioners.
Yes.
And if you would introduce yourselves, John and your.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. My name is John Reed, the newly elected Chair of the HRC.
Congratulations.
I'm Don Barrett. I'm a new Commissioner and newly elected Vice Chair of the HRC.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm Malcolm McDowell. I've been a Commissioner and just be up for another term.
Great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, John.
Where shall we start?
It's your show.
First, I'd like to go over a few things that we've done, and address any concerns that might be here, and express a few concerns about, during this calendar year, or last calendar year, let me correct that, we have done an extensive amount of activities, to a point, we've had the Human Rights Academy with almost 200 participants in it. We had Human Rights Day with up to 150 people there. Both have had tremendous success. At the Human Rights Academy, we've had every single school except two, with the addition of middle school students from Howard. It was held at Howard Community Center. We even had the food service arrangements through Cape Cod Tech, which was a substantial savings because we were able to get it through the culinary program. Our attempt is to maximize our outreach, minimize the cost, if that be the case. So we are fiduciary responsible for the funds that are granted to us. Some of the other things we've done, we've had MCAD come down, we went to Mass Maritime, each one of the Commissioners, except for the new Commissioners, to meet with the new Head of MCAD, Mass Commission Against Discrimination, if we say that to you. And that went over very well. In our outreach and training initiatives, we've had community meetings, that we've had posted hours at the Transportation Building and at the Barnstable Recreation Center for the purposes of having people who wanted to file complaints or come in and talk about Human Rights Commission, for them to come in and meet with us. Each one of us took turns, I can't say enough about Tom Ryan more than anybody else, because he's put in tremendous amount of hours doing everything we asked him to do. And in that work, he's been able to not only establish us in a firmer setting, but also help us with legal, secure some legal help that was pro bono, okay? Which, without him, I don't know if we would get that. Some of the other things we have done, if I miss anything, gentlemen, you can fill in the gaps. Some of the other things we have done is we have heard some cases, out of our outreach initiatives, we potentially have 10 cases coming forward right now, at least an interest in speaking with the Human Rights Commission, beginning some both education-related as well as J2 cases. There's something else I wanted to add. Another activity that was very successful, held at Rock Harbor, was the J1 Workers Celebration. That brought a tremendous crowd, and we have been doing something that I've heard over the years, you've asked for. That is, how are you doing outreach to the community? How are people finding out about what you do? We have gone out of our way with the help of our consultants to do that.
I'll jump in here, John, with regard to the J1 Workers, because I think that it needs to be emphasized that we have been very, very active with our J1 Workers, and in addition to the block party that was held at Rock Harbor, which involved not only the J1 Workers, but also 100 people in the community came out. And I think that's, that's very commendable. But from that, we were also engaged by some of the J1 Workers who were having housing difficulties and discriminatory practices that we had to investigate, one of which was highly visible and in the media last summer. And there were a number of those cases that we went and investigated.
We proudly have U.S. Attorney Carmen Ortiz here for the Human Rights Day on December 10th, that was held at the Cape Codder Hotel and Resort. That day brought out more people than we've ever had before, particularly people of different communities who had issues. And privately, they have talked to some of us, but for confidentiality sake, we do not reveal the contents of the case.
Right, okay, absolutely.
And we won't. From an ethical point of view, everything is held in the most expedient way that the law allows us to do that. But we are continuing our progress, and next year, we hope to do more. I think that with adequate staff, adequate resources, and definitely a more aggressive program on training, we could be more efficient than we have been. I'm going to pause for a second and ask, are there any issues you have before we get to closure on something I need to bring up?
Not an issue, but just, I fully understand, you know, the issue of our confidentiality, about individual cases, but I think it's useful for us to know on a quantitative basis how many, you know, how many instances, or how many cases, or how many people you've, you know, you've dealt with as far as, as far as the help that you're offering.
Or, yeah, like the level of help, is some of it an information and referral? Is it?
That's certainly part of it, but there's a, there's a gross number. In other words, we saw 8,000 people, you know.
Right.
And then within that, you know, within that population of people that had reached out to us, this, you know, this much was serious, this much was information, and this much was, you know, who knows? But, you know, but the idea is that when, what people want to know, that, because, John, you and I have talked about this, you know, people don't really believe there's a problem if it isn't happening to them.
And Bill, I appreciate you saying that, but I want to clearly articulate something. There are problems, and people are coming forward and they're making requests, to the point where we went out into the public because folks did not feel comfortable coming here. The court to them represented something of an inconvenience or another government force that may do something to them. That's one of the reasons why we did outreach. I think in our presentation, I start talking about numbers because that's something I've heard before, and as the new Chair, you will get what you asked for. There's no doubt about that, but I mean, we also need adequate staff support to get that. We can't, we can do some things, but the staff person that we have is doing what we ask him to do, and that is important. We have a concern, though, and it's a bigger concern. We do have a staff person who works exceptionally hard for us. As a new Commissioner, in past years, I am not aware of any policy of sort, where if the person's assigned to us, what input do we have with the person as far as his own performance schedule is concerned? Do we evaluate him? Are we part of the contract negotiation? Should we be there? And more importantly, at least the Chair should know how that works. Based on what we have in print and what is in the policy, we have stayed within the confines of what was in print and policy that I'm aware of. But our precedence is that in past years, the Chair signed off of the time card. This year, that seemed to have changed. I don't know where that's going to go, but I'd like to hear from you all about that.
Well, I think that that's, that's an issue of contract, and it has issues of personnel and that sort of thing. So I think that that's a conversation that isn't really a public conversation that we could have, because it does include people's personnel issues. It isn't legal to do it in this type of venue. However, we can take that up.
I'd like to.
After, if, if we wish, or if you, but just to be more specific about what you're saying, I think we're all aware of what he's referring to as the different communications, and because it's about.
Well, it's a practical matter. You're part of the Human Service Department. The Human Service Department is, you know, is headed by Beth Albert. Beth Albert has some responsibility to report to us as to what, you know, what goes on underneath her, you know, her control. And that's, I think, simply stated, I think that's the, you know, that's the number of the issue.
Yeah.
The, Tom Ryan is a contract employee. You're the, you are the ones that contract with him to do that. We provide a budget, let's say, at least in my experience, again, we provide the support for the, for the cost of that and some, you know, some support for some of the administrative burden that goes with that. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think you said it accurately.
But the, but the, but the question is, if we have assigned the administrative responsibility for oversight, administrative oversight, not for, you know, not for operational oversight to, you know, to the, to the Human Service Department, then the Human Service Department head, you know, has some concern about, you know, what, what level of, you know, what level of contact and reporting should there be, since we hold her, you, you end up in their budget, in the Human Service Department budget. So she has some concern that she has, if not control, at least an understanding of activities. So I think that's, Beth is here, so would you add anything to that?
No, I think that's, that's.
So then.
Yeah, I think if there are, if there are operational issues.
Let me counter.
Then I think those.
Your mission statement is your mission, is your mission statement, but we, we fund your person, we just need to know that this is, we're not dictating the action the person does. That's, you, he does what you ask him to do.
I saw that.
We have to, but we do have to have a record. Also, I mean, it's just for public information as well. I mean, you're giving this, you're giving money, for what? Well, that's their, I mean, you have, you have to have, it's public disclosure. And I'm not saying put names, cases, case numbers, you know, this sort of thing, but you have to give a general, like as Bill said, so many were serious enough to go to court, so many were information and referral, so many were, we did this much work with this person, it wasn't serious enough to go to court, and it wasn't, it was more than just giving them information and education.
I understand that, but there is a different concept that I'd like to put out.
Okay, well, excuse me.
My understanding was that until last July, the precedent for our Coordinator was to report to the Chairman or Chairperson of the Commission, who then passed that on to the Department of Human Services. Now, there has been a change.
What?
And I think we, I think that's under question.
I think it's, I think it's a big deal, but Beth, you'd like to?
Just so I can address this, I'm Beth Albert, I haven't met, I haven't met you as the new, the new Commissioner, so welcome. That has not changed, the day-to-day supervision and planning of activities for the Contract to the Human Rights Commission, that has not changed at all. In fact, nothing has changed, except we're making a bigger request for consistent reporting on a monthly basis, because that was a piece that was missing. I have always signed off on the Coordinator's time sheets.
Right.
Since I began. That has not changed.
We need more information for our records.
Right, and actually, previous Coordinators always submitted documentation, that, that has not changed. The type of documentation has changed, because we want to be in a consistent way, have a better idea of how, just like you said, how many cases are coming in, what types of cases are they, what's the disposition? Not asking for confidential information at all. So essentially, the structure has not changed. The reporting, absolutely, there has been an increased ask for consistent quality reporting.
And this benefits you, because it justifies your, your existence, really, and if you're, if, the more you're known, the more the people are aware of you and start using your services in one way or another, the more, you need those statistics to show that you're doing this. It helps with grants, it helps with coming to us for increased funding, it helps with partnering for grants, you need that information, just as we would need that information if we were going to do grants for you. So it's just really the basic information that every department has to put forward to us.
Okay, John, you, you had some comments you wanted to make.
I do, and this is one of my bigger comments. Our efficiency can be greater, the reporting process could be better, from our point of view, but I think what we need is either a policy or something in writing outside of our mission statement, a mandate that articulates these issues, because if a person fundamentally believed they were doing everything and complying with that, but never seems to satisfy the arrangement, what are the rules? What are the rules? Tell, what are the rules, how are they in writing? But let me finish, let me finish. As a Commissioner, and I understood what you said about division of power, I do understand that, but as a Commissioner, or as the new Chair in this case, it had been a precedent that the Chair signed off stating that this work actually took place. Is that still honored, or is there a new situation where two people sign off, or just one?
Well, I don't, excuse me, Sheila, I don't think that we're going to solve this right here today. And, and you do have some very legitimate questions, and I think that those are things that you may want to work out with Mark and Beth, and then we can have those policies established. Mark will let us know if they are, if there's anything there that the Commissioners need to, that we need to sign off on, and we want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the process and with whatever the procedures for operation, the standards in terms of getting things done. I think it would be appropriate if you dealt with that outside this meeting today, if that's agreeable.
We'd be glad to do that, but I want to completely report.
And thank you for bringing that up, yes.
I think that's a very good idea, and speaking for the other new Commissioner, as well as myself and the entire body, I would like to invite Mary Beth.
Beth, Beth Albert.
Beth, I'm sorry, Beth, to probably our next meeting. If there is confusion, if there is hard feelings about something, let us discuss it at our meeting with all of the parties there.
And I think that it is more of a, it's a confusion in someone's head is, and it's not, it's really not a.
Sheila, I don't really think we need to belabor it, I think.
I just want to complete the report.
Okay.
And I will contact the appropriate parties and place them on the agenda, or place us on your agenda.
Okay.
Either or, because if it's an executive session matter, which I believe it to be, then we need to sit in executive session and deal with it.
Right.
But let me finish, because I'm not finished yet.
Good, all right.
Based on what you perceive to be our budgetary needs, our budgetary review, we have some other ideas about holding broader community-based workshops and trainings. And those would be more effective in getting and articulating the message of the Commission. As far as the cases are concerned, there will be some definite cases. There have been cases not brought to the Commission for the simple reason, the legality of it. Should it go to an attorney and go to court, or should it come here and be mediated and arbitrated? Those are things that people always ask when they come to us. If the case is appropriate to go to court, by talking to us, we're helping them to make that decision.
Right.
In the reporting process, and we say refer to court, that is, that might satisfy In the reporting process, and we say referred to court, that is, that might satisfy some of what we're talking about the other way. But there are cases pending right now. There are even cases in Nantucket County that is not in our jurisdiction that's pending right now. How we handle them and where we go forward, we will take the most expedient, most judicious process to deal with them. And they will be adequately recorded. But we do want to express our concerns that we are appreciative of the commission for the budget you have given us. We do not intend to underutilize your budget. We will maximize the use of the budget and probably add significant savings to the commission. But that, we wanted to express the other concerns, because they are real issues for us, and it impedes our work. I need to just have, as the new chair, I need to have a clear vision as to where we're going in the next year. So if you call me in and say, John, what is going on, I can definitely tell you in language that would be appropriate for both the public and for the commission, what we're doing and where we're going.
And that's very helpful for us to know, yes. And we do want to work with you on that. We want to make sure that, that you are comfortable in your roles, that you have the staff support that you need, and that whatever procedures need to be in place for your operation to work smoothly, we want to make sure that happens.
Right.
Gentlemen?
Is there anything else?
One, as a commissioner, I'm not completely comfortable for this one standpoint, and that is, is that our coordinator hasn't been paid since last July.
Well, there is a reason for that, that can be discussed after.
You know, you're bringing things up that maybe Sheila knows about, but the rest of us don't know about it. And I don't think we want to...
Well, it's a personnel issue. I think that if you want to, you're right, we, those are things that we can...
Excuse me, Chris, you wanted to say something?
I just have...
This is Chris Cananga from the Assembly of Orleans.
Chris Cananga, Orleans. I just, I'm a little uncomfortable just on, on two things, so I just want to raise the issues, however they get resolved. One is the fact that, that the Human Rights Commission is a little different than, it's being referred to as if it's just similar to all the other departments or sub-departments. And it's not in one way, and that is, that unless it's, I don't know if you call them clients, or complainants, or what, whatever, unless it can remain confidential, it's, people don't come to them. So it's really important that it remain confidential. And the nature of the issues are such that revealing the issue, or the, even the, the person against whom, person or corporation, or police department, or whoever the complaint is against, in essence, makes the rest of it discoverable. So unless the reporting is quite general, it, it can somewhat impede or defeat the very purpose of the commission, so.
Yes, thank you for those comments. And I think, you know, we're here to really talk about your budget. You have other internal operations...
Chris wants...
I just wanted to finish.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
The second thing is the, is the personnel issue. So I just want to go on the record, myself as saying, just because something's a personnel issue does not make it appropriate for executive session.
That's correct, yes. Thank you. That's very true. And that's why I think we're here to talk about your budget. There are other issues that are important to you that have arisen, that are not resolved. Some of them relate to a contract employee or an employee. And I think those need to be taken up in entirely different format, and we want to make that happen for you, but not today. But we recognize you have real concerns. We know as commissioners, you, you have authority within your own right as commissioners, which is entirely different from the, the, the contract employee that you have, and whatever that person's responsibilities are. So I just want to make sure that those things are separate, and we deal with them post haste, that they don't sit and languish, that John's and your concerns are addressed, both by Mark and Beth. And so we want that to happen as soon as possible. But we do need to stick with the agenda today, which is really the budget, if that's, if we can do that. Good, okay. So we have a, you were, you were walking through your budget in terms of the, you pretty much have a budget that is, is...
It's the same as last year.
It's the same. I wanted to say, yeah, that is actually level funded from the current year. And that's what you're proposing to us. And you can live within that, based on...
Yes.
You can. I know when you're commissioners, you really do need some outside common help, especially if you're new, to help work with you, because you're, you have certain responsibilities that really don't relate to the county in a certain sense. I mean, you have your own mission and your own responsibilities, but yet there are certain things you have to do that are reportable, I mean, in terms of statistics and all of that. So you do need support. And that's what we want to help you get, is the support to do your jobs as commissioners, and we will do that.
And the budget that was submitted is, we do understand is the same as last year.
Right.
But we also want to express to you that we will make every attempt to comply with our mandated mission within that budget.
Well, we, we thank you for that, and we wish we could give you more, but...
Well, I understand.
It's where we are.
I think in terms of budget, this year, I, I think there, we had a particularly good year in terms of establishing momentum, and that was evidenced very clearly with the Human Rights Academy and the International Human Rights Day Dinner. And that, that momentum, hopefully, will continue in this year, and it will not, we're not looking for increased, increased funding to do, to keep the momentum going.
And you have a new chair now, obviously, that always creates more activity, usually on the part of a commissioner, when a new chairperson comes in. So we know, John, so we...
Well, you know, and you do, you know, we just had right before you our RDO office, our research and development office. And they do grant writing and that sort of thing. And if you speak with them and tell them, you know, that what it is exactly you do, or what kinds of grants you would be able to, they keep an eye out for those and alert you to them, and then will help you, if not write those grants for you within that thing. So it's a very good resource while you're out there trying to supplement what small amounts that we can give you. So it's a, it's a resource there for you to have and to, to take part, to make use of.
But you have your county connection through that, and that's, she, she was, is your conduit to other resources within the county.
John, do you have recent contact information? If you, if you could leave that with me, I want to get ahold of you for, you know, let's say for publicizing some human rights stuff. You know, maybe, you know, I think you've been on television with me before.
I'm on TV a lot.
Yeah, right.
Everything that they have on file is still...
Right.
So are there any other comments you'd like to make or reports? No? Well, thank you very much. And just please be assured that we, we welcome you, and we congratulate you. You do great work, and we want to be here to support you in that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks. Have a good day.
Well, I'm...
Are you okay, John?
Outside.
Okay, let's go back to our revenues for next year. We left off with the Health Department of Sanitarian Services.
It's going up quite a bit. Now, what's the, what's the net effect of why it's going up $50,000? Did you say something about that?
What went up 50,000?
Sanitarian Services revenue is going from 32,000 to 83,000.
Because he's providing more sanitarium services to other communities, besides Orleans.
Besides Orleans?
Yeah.
Do we have like a, like a circuit writer now?
No, George is working on...
George told us about it when he presented his budget.
Right. He's working on some other relationships. I don't want to mention what they are in terms of jeopardizing them, but that is what, we are projecting that we're going to be doing more health services. So that's what that's about. Septic repair program, that covers the septic betterment staff. Yeah, we have three people on staff now, Kendall and two other people, and that matches exactly what their piece of the budget in the Health Department is. Fire training, 150,000, you saw it. You know, actually, that's not a bad number. I mean, it was, and I knew that was a billing issue when we only had 3,800 on the report.
So it is down 30,000?
I pulled that down 30,000 for next year. You hear now that the 150 is probably not a bad number, since Lee's at around 70 through half of the year. So it's probably still a little bit, and he said it, it kind of varies in and out, and also the second half of the year is more focused on local towns. So, but that's not a bad number. It's maybe a little bit high, but it's not a horrible number. Maybe the 180 was a tough number to, to hold them to, but the 150 is not so bad.
Yeah, I think that's better, too.
Yeah. So we were able to pull that number down a little bit. The Cape Cod Commission, you heard from Paul, they did increase their, and they've already realized, even for this year, more than the 90,000 in development fees. So he, he did pull that assumption up for next year by 25,000. So I think that probably makes sense. That's the license plate number, the 36920, that's what's in the facilities budget to take care of the rest area. You see, it's only up 100, $876. Miscellaneous receipts and interest income, you see those stayed the same. I didn't change those at all. And then the CCEPF reserve, that's what the commission uses out of their own Cape Cod Commission fund reserve. You see, that's actually down for next year. And then the final number there at the very, near the very bottom is the bond issue revenue. So that matches exactly what is in the proposed budget for bond projects, capital projects. I haven't gone through that number. I expect that that will come down, but it will come down both on the expense side, and then it'll come down on that revenue number side as well. I haven't gone through all that. Because sort of what I wanted to project and give to you, so that's the revenue picture, it's very similar, as I said, to what we spoke about when John Omen and Marsha and Spiro were here a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, thanks.
So you see, it's down. It's down to about 23 and a half million dollars, of which about a million of that was the Cape Cod, Cape Light Compact piece. So, but I wanted to give you the picture. What you turn to the next page is on the expenditure side is what the budget looks like as requested. So these are all of the numbers that you've heard from the departments as requested, including new positions that they've asked for, or whatever other things they've asked for. And you see that that totals up. I won't go through all of that. You've, we've been through all of these so far to date. You see, that adds up to about 24.15 million. And it's actually down. Many of the departments came back with requests that were down last year. It also does not include the Cape Light Compact, so that's obviously a big chunk of that. But many of the departments, Beth included, George Hoifelder in Health Department, Jack Mead at the Registry of Deeds, Andy Gottlieb for the Protection Collaborative, they all came down with reduced budgets already. So, but you see that it's still the total requested expenditures relative to what we think we're going to have available next year. We're still 600,000, just under, off. So that's the hard part. So...
So we have to cut 600,000 out of the budget.
And I've done the hard work for you. If you turn the page, this is sort of what I've suggested.
This is for next year now.
This is for next year. That's what we're talking about. So I've gone through all of the requested budgets and sort of paired where I think it, it may make the most sense to look at pulling some numbers down. Top of the list, obviously, and I went item by item, through each of these budgets, so you see kind of by department where we're looking. You have a professional services line item, 50,000, proposing taking 10 out of that, leaving 40. I mentioned sort of off air the Arts Foundation piece, but I think maybe we look at, at least temporarily doing a license plate dedication for, to make up a bit of that, if not all, maybe a little bit even more. So we can think about that. I did, as I mentioned, with Darlene here, take out the 18,000 on her facility improvements.
She was okay with that.
She seemed okay with that, yeah. You know, it's just a difficult one, you sort of, as you see, that leaves them nothing in that particular facility improvement line item, and you hate to sort of leave them out on a limb. But there really wasn't anything in the assembly budget that, you know, was, you could cut, that was discretionary enough to cut. I squeezed a couple of thousand in the miscellaneous equipment line item finance.
Before you leave the assembly, how are we accounting for the new county clerk? Is that, is that money coming out of our end?
You know, it's built into the budget, because it's part of really Janice's salary. So it's built in there.
So what, what's the net effect? Are we, she has another step?
The net effect is we boosted her one grade.
Okay.
Okay, so can I, I stepped outside, so I apologize.
Yeah.
What you're doing is you're taking the amounts requested.
Yep, that's the second page.
And so the third page is...
Go back, let me, let me just start over.
All right, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm making you do that.
So go back to, so the first page is basically what we think we're going to have next year. So you have 23 and a half million.
Those are all our ins.
Then I look at, okay, everybody, if we could do everything that everybody wanted that they asked for, it would cost us 24.152 million dollars. 24,152,154. But we're saying we don't have that. We only have 23,556,463. So when you do some simple subtraction, you're 600,000 dollars approximately out of whack.
Right.
So how do you make it not out of whack?
How do we make it work?
Yeah, that's what we're, and that's what this third page basically is trying to do.
All right. So that's what I figured. So this is what you're saying to take out of each of those asks?
Yeah, basically. Yeah, basically.
Okay. So even though we'll say, this was, this was, they wanted this new position, but it's not...
Yeah, I would say I didn't fund any new positions.
I see. Okay. So, but you're asking about each one of those of, yeah, so maybe one and not, all right. No, this is very good, because it does bring everybody's...
Got to start somewhere.
I'd like to keep the conversation, you know, organized.
I just was trying to get...
No, not you.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have, did you have something not on here you wanted to talk about?
Well, there's a continuing question in my mind as to what the real headcount number is. I have 179 and a half FTEs for year round, and then there's a figure of 299 that's used for the combination of seasonal grant and other employees. And it's important to me, as I understand the budget, because the question of, of headcount is, you know, is open question, because one of the questions that comes up is, if you are looking at reducing funding, the, a visible part is looking at, let's say, cutting existing positions. Now, looking at this, it says that we are looking at the reduction of expense by not funding new positions, or to me, adding headcount. Is that, is that accurate?
That's correct. That's what it said.
Bill, this, this budget that we're proposing for 2013 doesn't cut any positions.
Right.
It doesn't cut any full-time positions. It doesn't cut any part-time positions. It doesn't cut any temporary summer positions. But it also does not fund any new positions.
Requests, requests.
So I want to make it clear, we're not, we're not taking anybody's job away, we're not laying anybody off, we're not, we're not doing any of that.
Right.
But we're also not funding any new positions. I just don't think we're going to be in a position to do that next year. Now, perhaps the next year after, but...
I'm very, I'm very concerned about how, you know, how the people who work for us understand how we, you know, how we look at this. And I don't want to have anybody be put into fear, because we're, you know, we're looking, or we are suggesting that we're intending to do any of that. So thank you very much for that.
So as you see on IT, there were some proposed new positions. I did not fund those. But also, in addition, he had some other items that I thought that I just needed to, I hate to use the phrase nickel and dime, but that's really sort of the appropriate phrases. So I reduced the overtime proposal he had from 20,000 to 15,000. But that's still a little bit of an increase, because I know, I know that they have to respond to things, and it's one of the, kind of the conditions we've put on them, is we want to make sure that the phones and email and all those are up and running. So they never go down in the middle of the day, they always go down, you know, after hours.
I guess my other question would be, we talked a lot about the, his objectives in terms of what he needs to accomplish in IT, particularly to get the county's IT services in line with... particularly to get the county's, um, IT, um, services in line with, you know, to be able to take advantage of Open Cape and all that. How much will this compromise what we need, really need to do for this coming year? Or actually, Open Cape, well, yeah, it starts some...
Let me go back to the Open Cape one, just sort of that, sort of come to that piece of it later on, as I, as I sort of mentioned earlier. You know, I, I, do I think that we could use all of these new positions and that they wouldn't be people who are just kind of, yeah, I, I do. I, I would pretty much agree with most of them, but I just, we're just not in a position to do it, so. Does it compromise sort of, you know, the grand scheme of things that we want to do? Yeah, I'd say that to some extent it does, and it defers it. We won't be able to do everything we want to do next year. That's sort of life in the budgetary lane, so to speak.
Well, in addition to this, and I, and I had brought this up before, we also have on our, our agenda, which is part of all of this as well, all of this is part of the new trying to make ourselves, you know, relevant and up to date, is our own re, internal reforms that we have had a study on, we spent money on, and, and obviously, if we're not going to do reform ever, then that wasn't, that was a waste of time, and then other people are wasting their time thinking that they could maybe suggest recommendations for the county to go forward, and maybe they'll never be. So I'm fine with this, but I would like to make a, a pact between us that as soon as this budget is done, that we don't start in January, that we start like, you know, March first and start looking at how are we going to tackle the reforms ahead of us? And I think that those are good discussions, even to have, you know, assembly members to be in attendance of or to weigh in on, because this is going to affect how this county operates long after us. And, uh, I, I think it's our responsibility to leave it in that, that way. So, you know, I, I don't mind deferring anything, but I don't want to defer the conversation until next January. I think that it's a conversation that is long, and it's gonna take a lot more work and detail and thinking things out, and, uh, it has to start like right after we, we get this budget done.
I'd like to suggest that as a practical matter, we will be getting the report from this last committee about that time.
Right.
And I think that that would be an appropriate reason to, let's say, to begin that, that kind of a discussion.
Because then, as we're going along, we can see what we're going to be facing in two thousand fourteen, but I would like to think that we'd have at least a goal of making one change or two change towards those reforms that will make things better, because we're growing and our staff isn't growing. And it's just a potential of not being able to meet the obligation that you're setting yourself up to, to do.
Well, I don't, I guess I don't get that part of it because the budget that I see in front of me, where it's not expanding, it is meeting all of the obligations that are, you know, that are present.
I'm not saying that, but we're, we're taking on new ones and we're going into new areas, so we have to consider the new areas and new ventures.
We need to develop a transitional, you know, and to have a conversation, develop a transitional plan. It takes time.
It's a lot longer than...
I guess what I argue is you have resources to do that.
Yes, we do.
There's in your budget still forty thousand in professional services. So you do have some of that. And I'm sort of gonna get to the, the kind of wild card that we sort of, I built in here so as not to leave us, you know, in the lurch kind of with this future piece of it, because I, I understand that's out there. So, so let me just kind of finish up kind of piece by piece, and you can, then we can kind of discuss whether you think some should be back in, which we can play with, or, you know, whatever. But, so, um, I also on IT went back and, and trimmed his professional services budget a little bit. Um, uh, he had, he had asked for a hundred and sixty-six. I left a hundred and fifty in, so I took sixteen out. That's actually an increase from where he was this year. So I think in terms of IT and sort of hiring outside staff and vendor, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't improve, improve his staff, but I think we can cover it with outside vendors and, and part-time, uh, contract people. Facilities was the next one. He asked for two new positions, a maintenance and a custodian, and I, I didn't fund those, or I'm recommending they not be funded. Um, I did pare back and, and with John's because his budget is so spread out, it's mostly a lot of sort of that nickel and diming, but, um, I took his new vehicle out. We didn't fund any new vehicles for next year. Um, people kind of get stuck in these, uh, ruts, but they'll have to make do, uh, for another year. And then that miscellaneous line items cut, that's sort of going through and sort of returning some of his requested increases to two thousand twelve levels, just because I didn't think we could do anything else at this point in time. On extension, I didn't fund the new vehicle that they requested or I'm recommending that we not. And on the, both the mini grant, land management grants and the forest fire preparedness, I've trimmed both of those by five thousand. So there's still twenty thousand in there, but they're just a little bit short. I mentioned Registry of Deeds. Um, he had already come back with a reduced budget submission. I didn't really see any place further to cut.
A question, I mean, I wasn't here for his. Um, does he maintain the same staff or does he have a staff reduction at all to?
He's actually been, we've, we've been doing a couple of things with registries. Actually, um, basically maintaining the same staff, but where people retire, he's sort of promoting from within and then doesn't necessarily hire new at the, at the, at the entry level position. And what he's asked me to do, and I've done it, and I've kind of carried staff positions that are unfunded and then carried a couple that are funded, just things next year start picking up and he needs to hire staff. So we've sort of done a little bit of both, you know, but he's still, George Jack's been, been coming back actually with, you know, he's recognized the, the kind of nature of the business, and he's actually been, his budget's actually been reduced over the past few years, even with staff.
And he's, he's made use of the technologies and, and those benefits that has made everything else more efficient, we need, need this stuff, so he's done a good job.
Dredge, I mentioned, that matches the revenues. That went up just a little bit, I think, from next, last year. Um, and this is sort of the wild card one. I don't know where else to put it. It's under the Office of Regionalization, and I included seventy-five thousand. It goes back to this whole discussion we had when IT was here, the Open Cape letter, and, you know, you can use it sort of how you see it. I'm not sure exactly how to use it now. It's sort of just kind of framed in my mind that we're gonna need some money going into two thousand and thirteen to either do regional services or to do this, you know, to use to do, um, kind of future planning efforts. So I did include seventy-five thousand. It's sort of a new piece. Don't quite know where to put it. Maybe we can talk about that a little bit. But it does give you some resources, and that could either be as a contractual services. You could use it as a, an employee to, um, uh, put a frame around kind of this, um, either Open Cape, high-tech pieces or any kind of regional services that you want.
John was talking about that type of, right, but...
Yeah, John was talking about it.
But that's not really an IT position.
I, I don't see it as an IT. No, I don't see it bearing under there, but, um, it's more really, you know, so we have this Open Cape backbone. How, as a region, collectively do we use it? It could do that. It could help us do assessing if we think assessing needs to be done. It just kind of gives you the ordinary piece.
And anything that we would do in this area, we have associated revenues. I mean, if we're going to provide services on a regional basis, it's very likely that the towns or the, whomever or whatever we provide them to will have a revenue stream coming in on the other end.
Although I would argue that it would lag.
Yeah, it would lag, that's true.
So you need, what you need is you need this thing, body, some resource to build the service.
We need some cash available, because we know that there are gonna be these things coming at us. We don't know exactly what it is. Um, so we can't put a name on it for the assembly to say, okay, that's exactly what you're gonna spend it on, but it's gonna be in those lines, and they're gonna hear, you know, pretty much about it anyway, where that money is going, so.
The first one online that I would see a need for someone to sort of work on this is the e-billing, e-permitting. That's, assuming they can get the grant.
Yeah.
That's gonna be in line right away. So you sort of need someone, I assume, to help, and simply kind of coordinate all the pieces.
And that, that grant, wasn't it thirty days after it was submitted?
Yeah, it should be soon. It should be soon.
But it won't be in time for the budget.
No, I think it will be. I think it's gonna be like February fifteenth or something. They're gonna know, or even sooner than that.
That would be the day, so, yeah.
Or it's, or it's gonna be...
I'm flexible. I'm not that flexible.
Yeah, I don't think, or maybe it's sooner than that because it was really, maybe the end of January, we might know.
No, we'll do the seventeenth.
Oh, so it's thirty, that's right. So it is the seventeenth, so it's, it's around the fifteenth, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, but...
So there's some money in there.
In the, the, give it to them late.
So, um, health, I mentioned, George came in actually with a reduced budget submission. I didn't really see anything further to take out of that. Same with Beth and Human Services. She had really cut down her professional services line item. And it did, does leave the HRC with what they requested similar to last year. So that's really level funded. Um, Cove came back with the Family Advocate new position and, um, recommending we don't fund new positions.
Right.
Um, Elder Services, a question mark right now. It's left in with what it is this year. Uh, Fire Training, um, Lee had asked for initial five thousand for professional services, and I took that out, so he's basically level funded. Commission is a separate fund, but actually their budget is lower than it was last year as well, so. Um, and, uh, Andrea and the Water Collaborative came back. They had a reduced budget submission, so. So they sort of, you know, I appreciate that very much. They sort of made my job a lot easier, I have to say. Otherwise, it would be a lot tougher for all of us. And then in the shared costs, you just kind of see where it's, and again, sort of nickel and diming a little bit. I don't mean to disparage five thousand dollars, because now we see five thousand as a lot, can make or break the whole budget. But I did, I'll draw your attention to the Smart Guide that's not in there right now. Um, uh, they managed to pull down general liability insurance, you know, the, the grants and the, not grants, the, uh, credits and things from my, really helped us kind of...
The discount?
Bring the discounts and the, and the member, um, it's like your member share or whatever. I can't remember the word.
You know, the Smart Guide, going back to that for a minute, that was, that was an economic development, you know, piece.
Oh, good. Good one. You could ask them.
Yeah, you can, you know, I, I hear your bill and I understand, but you can also only stretch the license plate dollars so far before it starts to tear as well.
Okay, but the other piece is that they were supposed to be moving towards a web presence for the Smart Guide that could be downloadable for, you know, in, let's say, printed increments to go, you know, to go forward. I don't know where that is, but it's certainly, to me, the direction that they should be going.
Right.
Um, and then just so you see the, on the bottom, two Reserve Fund and Stabilization Fund. This year in the budget, we included twenty-five thousand in both of those line items, and I basically for next year, funding them fifteen thousand left, so that we'll still have a, a budgeted reserve of a total of twenty, ten in each line item, but it'll be less than it was this year, so. And if you add all those up, you get five hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Is it exactly to the penny?
No, it's seven hundred and ninety-three you got to play with, basically.
Okay.
Wow.
Last year, we gave fifty thousand dollars to workforce for that rent.
That's not in there. Yeah, that's not in there.
As a matter of fact, they haven't picked that up this year either, right?
Well, there's nothing to fund it for, so, no. So...
Thank you. That was well done.
Have another massage on this before the fifteenth.
Well, you recognize though, remember, there were some things we talked about that we're not able to do, and I wish we could do them, and you realize that a couple of things, you know, broke our way, so to speak. Some of these budgets came down. Health insurance, we weren't able to set any of the health insurance money aside. Um, this does include in the shared costs the twenty-five percent that is required to be set aside, up to twenty-five percent for a mitigation fund, so I did include that. That's about...
And that's a full twenty-five percent.
It's the full twenty-five percent. It's about sixty-five thousand dollars.
You're required to do them.
As part of the health insurance reform, it's up to twenty-five percent. So you can use lower, but if you go through the process, you might get to a point where this in, the separate panel says, no, put twenty-five percent there.
And to be really fair to the employees, you know, that I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I do, too.
I mean, it's to really, I mean, they're taking a huge hit on health insurance next year, and there's no question about it.
And this is based, I'm sorry, just, just so you know, I'm glad you mentioned that. These numbers are all based on the actual rates that were set by Cape Cod and the Health Group last week, so. Um, what else did I want to say? So we weren't able to do that. We weren't able to set any aside of money from the health insurance savings. And we weren't able to increase, we talked about increasing the mileage allowance.
Oh, yeah. I didn't think this was the year for that. I started going, I just played with some of those numbers just by going up a couple of cents.
To go from forty-one to about, I think it's the federal rate's fifty-five, that would have cost us about fifty grand countywide, so.
Yeah, but and also, um, and even doing half, it, it, yeah, because I played with, like, maybe we should just, you don't have to increase the whole thing. It's just not the year.
It's just sort of not there, yeah, exactly.
So.
John?
Thank you. Uh, Tricia Doherty, uh, last week had asked, um, John Mead, um, what his projected numbers are, with a tendency they wouldn't go to, to, toward his numbers rather than, um, based on this year. Has Mr. Mead given you hard numbers as to what his expectations are for both the business side and the registry?
No, we haven't had a chance to sit down yet, John, but we, we will do that before.
I mean, if we go by these numbers, if the roughly estimates are this year, it'll be six point four million on the deed side, and would be approximately two point seven on the business side. That leaves us as a structural deficit if those numbers hold true for two thousand thirteen, by my, just by my numbers gone in two thousand twelve, general revenues.
I don't have, I don't have my presentation in front of mine. It was a little bit different.
So that's one of the reasons why that, you know, that meeting hasn't taken place. Okay.
But, yeah, we'll, we'll sit down and we'll go.
It'll be before the budget, right?
Yeah, before, before we sit down.
Yeah, we would like to have it all lined up so that we don't have to read them.
And the other thing is, I'm just, if you could clear this up for me, when you say that John Mead has a couple of funded positions that are not filled, how, how is that, is that presented inside the budget?
He has, uh, it's, it'll be built into his budget, so it's usually in the...
As if they were there?
They're, yeah, they're the lower copy center, usually the, the entry level positions. So there's two in there. And then on the number, you'll see on the, you know how I do the list? You'll see two other positions, but there'll be no funding next to them. He's asked that that be carried, and I don't see an issue doing that.
And if, and if I can just add to that, is, his justification on that was that there were times like in the summer or if there is an increase of turn, you know, housing sales and things start turning around. He's been able to live without any of those positions, so he just kind of keeps them. You may need them. So it's like a safety net for them.
I want to sort of portray it, John, as a good thing, because Jack realizes that when times are slow over there, he doesn't need forty-two bodies, but he also foresees a time where perhaps in the future, he might need forty-two bodies. So if he can get by with thirty-seven, he's willing to work with thirty-seven.
We also asked him if there was a sudden bump in activity. Was he in a position to handle it? And he did say that he, you know, that he, he would, so, but that wouldn't be a sustainable activity, but it would, you know, he's prepared for, with this, with the optimism that it might happen, that they'd be able to deal with it.
Now, can I ask like a specific question that came up about the Arts Foundation? Do you want me to include some funding through the license plate specifically for that, or is that something you want to bring back?
Well, we're funding them thirty-five thousand now, right? Isn't that what we funded them this year?
This year, yeah.
And this year, and you're proposing thirty for next year?
Well, they put sixty, which is not gonna happen.
Yeah, for sixty.
But if we funded them thirty and then maybe, um, checked with the EDC and see if we could use five thousand for the...
Twenty-five. What if we were like in the twenty-five and they got ten from, or, or fifteen from the economic company?
I don't know. We have to know what the EDC's goals are. I mean, they're...
Their revenue, like I said, their revenues over the past couple of months have been better, but it was getting tight for a while. It was really tight.
Or maybe, yeah, maybe at the next EDC, we should, we should call David, put that...
I forgot, who's, who's the EDC person? You?
No, me. She's on it, yeah, but I attend to.
You wanna, I don't know whether you wanted to, I didn't want to step on...
I'll talk to David. I'll talk, I'll give him a call.
Okay.
Because they meet next week.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they do. The first Thursday.
That's right. Oh, good. So you can get some feedback before I have to put this thing together.
Um...
Better than a consultant.
Yeah, it's better to tell, tell him now because he might want to put that out for an honest agenda, so for that discussion. Um, yeah, I mean, if, if this year they could do half and half, that would be great.
Who does?
What if they gave twenty and we gave twenty?
Who? You're talking about the EDC? I don't think that, I don't think that would happen. I don't think that would happen. I mean, I don't know, but it's possible.
Well, there, there's a commitment to, as I understand it, of two hundred and fifty thousand of the license plate money, projected license plate money to go, because that appears in the Cape Cod Commission budget.
Right, that's right.
And on, on past revenue levels, they've always used a figure of four hundred thousand dollars for the total amount that the EDC expects from license plate, which means that the, the probable, or possible pot is a hundred and fifty thousand. So that would be the window of activity that they would, that they would look at in terms of what they would directly control. in terms of what they would directly control as far as grant activity.
Yeah, it's sort of chipping away at their discretionary piece.
Yeah, and we need to know what their goals are, particularly in terms of smarter Cape Guard and open cape, because they, they are one of the partners in that, so, I don't think that we should try to, you know, just usurp their funds without a conversation, anyway.
Is there any other comment?
Any comments from Assembly?
No? Joan spoke up? Anything else?
I'll be waiting to see. I really, I look forward to hearing from Jack Mead, what he really thinks the budget's gonna be.
Well, I think we are too, because he's been there a while, so...
Some of this has been wonderfully inclusive, I really appreciate listening to the whole thing, but it really depends on, but that's a, that's a million one difference from what, if you project, what, if it's a flat rate going to two thousand and thirteen, it's a million one difference with what you consider your potential revenues to be.
What do you mean, if it's a flat rate?
That's, but that's, again, yeah, that's, the revenue's coming from those taxes, there's other...
That's a deed stuff.
That's the deeds stuff.
You're saying?
Yeah, but that's...
The two functions, one is seven million, and right now, this year, we'll be six point four, if we catch the up next, three point two million, three point two times two is six point four.
No, Mark was saying, he expects it to be seven million this year.
Yeah, it should be higher than the three point two, usually the second half is higher.
That's where, it was in the Cape Guard time, so it must be true, I thought they said it would be flat, you know, the six point...
I don't know where they got their information.
I don't know.
So you think, you think that the second half will kick up to the three point eight million mark, and be a seven million dollar, I mean, that'd be much more comforting.
Yeah.
But that's why that number's there.
Yeah.
Because that's the anticipation, but we still, we'll keep massaging it until we send it to, send it to you guys.
I think I would...
And we want to be very comfortable with that number before we send it over.
I think it was the bad thing.
So when will, is there a timetable, I mean, budget's coming to us in two weeks, right?
Fifteen.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks. Yeah, so we have a...
So we have a little more room.